Okay, good.
All right, all set? Okay, we're now reconvening for the purpose of a workshop to discuss legislative agenda items. If the town manager could just help me out through this, but as I understand, the League of Municipalities is making a general ask for, hey, do you have any town issues or things that might be relevant so that when we put together our combined list of things to go to the General Assembly, you've thought of something that maybe we hadn't and we can add to the list, or we can combine it with some others from other municipalities? And so what we thought we would do today is have a little workshop discussion so that we could identify if there's an item. Well, this is what was on my ... You're frowning.
Oh, I didn't, I haven't seen it.
You see it now?
Yeah, I see it now.
Okay. And so if you have this, this was on the desk in front of us, it says, Town Council, printed off for easier viewing, it says right there, clear as day.
You brought your own.
You got the discount copy. So the idea is, all right, the idea is the 2016 legisla-- is this the one we want to...
No, no, let's not, let's not yet, because we had a different strategy.
Turn that one upside down for now.
The 2016?
Yes, turn that one upside down. That's not part of our strategy for today.
What I sent to you was this. Rice, you recall seeing that?
I recall seeing that, yes.
You want me to copy that, too?
That's this, no, I don't. That's this. It is no, it's not in color, it's got no pictures.
Okay.
It's not as fancy, but it has the same words in it.
Same thing.
And then also we'll give you an email from Ms. Dozier that I got at, I think we had an extra, twenty minutes, seven tonight, so I have not read this. That's her input.
Okay. I think everybody has one. All right, so the idea here that I think what I'd like to do in guiding our conversation is rather than what has happened in historical past where we had our own legislative agenda and then we would kick around all the pieces of it like a kickball, what I'd like to do is rather start with the text version of the League of Municipalities' general high-level issues and use this as something we kind of look through, because we're not trying to generate a list and say, this is all of Apex's legislative agenda items. What we want to do is provide a little input to the League, and so it would be probably wise for us to use their own material as kind of a starting point and to see if there's anything we look at here and we say, oh, we don't agree with that, and maybe we can do what I would call a red line, if you follow the reference. We can say, hey, we would prefer that word not be in there. Maybe it's simple as an adjective or something. The alternative would be if there's an issue that we think really ought to be on the League's list of things and we don't know why it's not, then we can do that as kind of an add. And I think that would be probably the easiest way. We certainly don't want to be here until all hours of the night, but I think the idea would be we just give them kind of a good input and say, you know what? The legislative agenda you guys have got is pretty good. I think we just want to affirm it, or we'll make a minor tweak. So, sound good?
Yeah, and this is the last session, so some of the stuff that you see in the seventeen, eighteen won't be applicable, because some of it has already been addressed by the General Assembly. So this is kind of a good starting point, but looking for your thoughts.
I had a thought on specifically related to affordable, addressing affordable housing needs, that we request more state-funded grants to be utilized to address affordable housing, just a generalized statement to that effect.
Is this something that somebody proposes, an idea such as that that we vote on for consensus, or how we...
My preference would be that we kind of need to have consensus as opposed to a simple majority. We probably all need to kind of agree and get around something to send it up, so that we can agree and say, this is what the Apex Town Council agrees or wants. So how would we, you want to discuss affordable housing?
Sure.
Okay. So I know we've had a recent workshop or some form of that on affordable housing, and there were a lot of words that were kicked in. The general topic I think would be good to include. My concern might be specificity of grants implies a how, and I think that generally I think they would want to say, here's what our sort of high-level priorities are, and however you in the General Assembly want to work it out, as long as you're following where our priority goes. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, the how really doesn't matter so much as long as there is more, I don't know if incentives is the right word, but incentives to encourage affordable housing in any way possible.
I'm honestly not very interested in making that a priority. I think the market takes care of itself, and people live where they want to live and choose to live. And I know we have people in that are employed in the town of Apex that, you know, drive a long distance to go live someplace else, and it's because they want space and quiet and, you know, I don't, I just, I'm not too interested in, I think that it will take care of itself. I don't think we need a government program or some sort of government-funded something for affordable housing.
The majority of people that I have talked to that, I won't say all, but the majority of people that I've talked to that work for the town of Apex that don't live here, it's not because they don't want to, it's because they can't afford it.
Well, to that point, I mean, I can't afford to live in the governor's club, but I don't expect everybody to pay for me to be able to live there. Like, I mean, again, it's, you go get another job and you go make more money so you can live where you want to live. I don't expect other people to pay in supplement so that I can go live in a fancier place, you know? I don't know. It's just not a priority for me.
So, does anyone know historically, because I haven't seen it, didn't just glance into it, but has the League of Municipalities discussed, I'm sure they have discussed it, but where they've recently come down on it, I don't, I don't have any knowledge of that. Whether or not it was purposely discussed and excluded because other municipalities have maybe had issues, do we know?
I know it's come up a lot in the Wake County Health Assessment Needs.
Here's the thing, too, if my house is worth, I'll pick a number, $400,000, and there's a neighborhood built next to my house that's affordable houses, and they're selling for, I don't know, 200, let's make it up, well, that value, based on appraisals, impacts my value in a negative way. So that's, that's why I struggle with that concept. I think it's a great thing, I think people deserve places to live, but asking other people to pay for it through grants, through incentives and other things, that's all collected through tax dollars, that's where I have a bit of an issue with it.
I would be very happy and willing to pay extra tax dollars for a firefighter or a teacher to be able to live close to me.
And you're, I mean, you're absolutely entitled to that opinion. I just, I have a different feeling about it. It's just not a priority for me.
Well, I think it's unfortunate we don't pay our teachers high enough so they can live. I think that's the most direct solution rather than grants, but at the same time, you know, I think, does a grant just help the individual, or does it help society as a whole? That's the question.
Well, we're also stuck on the grant, and that's not necessarily where we have to go with it.
Okay, well, is the incentive, or is having the individual live where they work, is that good just for the individual, or is it good for society as a whole? And I personally think there is a value to society as a whole so that the person doesn't have to travel over 10 buck to, to spend gas and to live the world. So there is some trade-off there that...
But that implies an assumption that everybody wants to live where they work, right?
Well, but if you're getting, yeah, well, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. It says that the ones that would like to live where they work and can't, then maybe it's worthwhile to just help them in some manner. I'm not sure what the best approach is, but I'm trying to just say what the trade-offs are. What is the value to all of us here if a fireman can live in this town and not have to travel everywhere? Is that good for us and the people that are in between?
And I know when we discussed this prior, there's, there are solutions that can come straight out of a municipality's planning department that can help create affordability just simply with alternate planning styles. So, or even if you want to call it regulations or changing density definitions, you know, one of the things I mentioned to the town manager was the idea, and I think I mentioned these to you, Bill.
Mentioned again.
Pardon?
Mentioned again.
Yeah, was the idea of same average can have a wider distribution, or mathematically a larger standard deviation, so one neighborhood doesn't have a bell curve that looks like that.
Yep.
But that the bell curve can go like that, so maybe you have some houses on the higher end, but you also have some houses on the lower end. And so you don't change the average, which doesn't impact necessarily the builder or the property owner who's trying to sell it, but now you've created, you know, five to eight percent of the homes are now going to be on smaller lots, smaller square footage. We still don't have to sacrifice much on the aesthetics and construction quality, we just need to say, hey, you know what? Not every house has to be 2,600 square feet or more. Some of them can be 1,500 or 1,200. I mean, my first house was 12, you know?
And that type of stuff interests me. I mean, like the regulation that we put on developers in our town and how much money they have to spend just to put in a neighborhood, I mean, that drives the cost way up.
Right, so my, so the reason I bring that up, I didn't mean to cut you off, but the reason I bring that up is because the general, the guide here is we're providing a list to the League so that they know how to talk to General Assembly or legislators. And so, you know, some of the examples that we have here are like funding for infrastructure demands for growing populations. So as a municipality, we're growing, we need to be able to say, hey, if you want to build, there's some fees you need to pay to help create infrastructure around us.
Yeah.
And if the legislator takes that away from every municipality, no matter whether they're poor, rich, small, big, that creates an infrastructure problem that the town then basically has to say, we have to say no growth because we can't afford an infrastructure that's required for the growth. And it's a chicken and egg problem. But with the, if you'll pardon the term, the pay-as-you-go model, whereas if you get somebody coming in to say, I'm going to develop this land, build a bunch of houses, and I understand that I'm going to have an impact on the infrastructure around you, so I'm going to help pay for some of that now, and not wait and make you tax everybody who's already here, all at the same time after the fact. So I point that out just as an example here, because that's, that's an example of what the League has said we want to take to the General Assembly and say, hey, municipalities need the ability to charge fees, raise funds to help support infrastructure, and just because one municipality may have done a bad job at collecting the fees and not investing in the infrastructure, don't penalize all the other municipalities. So from, from taking it back to this topic, so affordable housing, how can, how, is there, is there a way where we can give input to the League in a manner that affects how a legislator looks at affordability? And, you know, it needs to be kind of across-the-board municipalities, because there are 535 municipalities in the state, and we're in the, you know, top three percent, Apex is.
Looking at more, I guess, creative ways to provide affordable housing within the municipalities and the county area.
What about, what about, and I'm trying to figure out how to, see if there's a common One of my favorite types of state legislation is the empowerment or the enablement to do something. So, not that you need a poli sci class, but municipalities exist at the pleasure of the state.
Right.
And if they want to take away your incorporation, the state can do that. By the same token, you can't do things unless they sort of empower you to. They could say, if you want to levy a state road, you know, a road fee or a road tax, or if you want to charge this, or if you want to create rules for building and development, you can do so. So what if there, is there, and I don't know the answer, is there a way we can say to the state, we would like you to grant municipalities authority to do something related to affordable housing? Getting a little wonkish, but, but that, if there is a common ground, I think that's where it might be.
I like the empowerment of municipalities to be creative in their planning and doing that, yeah, to help with that, for sure.
I would agree with that.
I agree with that, I just think we do have the opportunity to be creative right now. I mean, when I was going to school, I lived in affordable housing. It wasn't paid for by anybody, but it was something I could afford.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was a two-bedroom, one-living-room slash den slash...
Kitchen.
Kitchen, well, the kitchen was just off to the back, slash, almost. Area to live, it was, I mean, it was a great room, period.
Yeah.
I lived very well, actually, I survived. I mean, it was a nice place. It was affordable. And I, I think when we're looking at, and I'm getting off track a little bit for a second, but when we're looking at it, we got to realize that if, and this plays into what you're saying, if a person wants to live in town in affordable housing, it's going to be townhouses or something like that, realistically. It's not going to be single-family...
Three-thousand.
Three-thousand, or large lot. It's got to be higher density, and that's, we only have the responsibility, the capability to do that.
So let me tag on to that, because I think, I think, we're, at least for Apex, we don't have, we don't have a large group of people who say, I can't afford to live anywhere. They can't afford maybe what some of us can afford. But they could afford something if it was on a smaller lot where the developer could get more lots per acre, and where townhouses instead of having, you know, 2,700 square feet or small, one to two bedrooms, and if, you know, I mean, you know, when, when I was young, we had two bedrooms for three kids, so we bumped up, you know, and people do that, and there's nothing wrong with that, and it's what you can afford. But I think at the bottom end, what we've seen is Apex's growth, the homes have gotten larger as time has gone, and the lots may not be getting larger, but the homes are, and people are content to have more house. And, you know, there's a lot of one-floor ranch, 1958 houses in the grid, in the old grid part of Apex, and a lot of people who live there have been there 25 years, you know, 30 years, 40 years, some of them. I wonder if maybe, and maybe this is a question for, I don't know, related to planning, is there a planning tool that we can't use, that we don't have the ability to use, that we might want? Maybe, maybe the way to word it is, we want flexibility in planning and funding to be, to be granted, and I don't know specifically if there's an example of what we want that we can't do, but...
Well, as an example, kind of, at Apex Friendship School, we actually zone for high density right alongside of that school.
Mm-hmm.
How do we get that going? I don't know. And do, do we need something, ability to have transportation available? Because that's a little bit farther out. You always, if you have low-income housing or affordable housing, you kind of want to have it where there's transportation. Back to life, if a person has to get into low-income housing, chances are they may well need public transportation. So how do you all get that together? And I'm really, I know I'm off-base right now in saying this, because it isn't with the legislative, but maybe, is there a, is there some legislation that we have or something the state can do to help us?
What if I, what if I just, if I can maybe get a closure on this, can we, can we generally, at a 20,000-foot level, just say something like, we want to make sure that the state empowers the municipalities to use means to aid in creating more affordable options for people to live within their municipality?
I think that's a good way to go.
We can, we'll wordsmith some.
Yeah, but I mean, that's a, that's a starting point for you.
We've got, we've got the intent.
Okay, great.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Because I think, I think we can do a lot of things if, and certainly planning has already heard some of the output, the other things. All right, good. Are we okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, let's look, if you don't mind, let's look through, so I mentioned infrastructure, I think we're okay there. You know, the, both of those are related to growth, and many of you have seen, we're starting to show up on people's lists of fastest-growing places. UNC Demography had us on both top-ten lists, and we were the only one. We were the only municipality on both top, the top-10 by head count or person, and the top-10 by percent growth, and that's rare. Usually there's, there are two separate lists, right? So we're actually the biggest town growing the fastest if you weight the things. And what did you say, Realtor.com and Southern Living and others are starting to like, these are the fastest-growing suburbs and blah. So I think those are good for infrastructure.
What do you mean by good?
Oh, I just mean, I just mean these, to me, unless we want to talk about, I think these that are, that came off of this, I don't know that we necessarily feel like there's anything else we want to ask for.
Okay, so keep them in, on our list, okay? That's what I, just to clarify some of what's in there.
We can, or we can just say we...
So are we on my topic, like?
That's what I think I would like to do, is go through this list.
Okay.
I think...
Where are we at on infrastructure?
I'm in the infrastructure.
Okay.
I think affirming infrastructure impacts related to growth to give us flexibility.
Number one.
Yeah.
Number one is the authority to impose a development tax for roads that we don't have, that Cary has.
Oh.
And we're having a problem because of that.
Yep.
And we can't charge anything at this point.
Transportation impact fee.
Transportation impact fee.
So...
For all, for all towns.
Yep, and I think...
Not just a select few.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, related to that, on the backside under public infrastructure, like the third bullet, it says municipal infrastructure needs. I think that's a general statement of what we're talking about, but if we want, and I agree with you, if we want to have specific authorization that is statewide, not just...
That's state-level funding.
This is state-level funding.
Oh, that's funding, oh, not state-level funding.
Town-level funding for everybody.
I misread that, okay, sorry. So I think, I think what you said is good, and I think if, what we would ask them is take that one and make it all municipalities.
Take Cary's and give it to everybody.
Omni...
Or Raleigh has it, I think Raleigh even has it, too.
Yeah. I think, you got that, town manager? I saw you scribbling, left to right.
You write right to left?
No. I write left to right also, but I was just, I was looking to see if you, I was looking to see if you took it the wrong way.
You did.
You did. You did, too. You were wondering.
Well, I'm left-handed, too.
All right, so that's a good, that's a good one, though.
Okay, good.
So to take the road impact fee, or street, whatever you want to call it, impact fee, and make it statewide.
Got it.
All right, what about economic growth?
I'm not sure I'm clear on this first one. What does that mean?
Tier designations?
Yeah.
The state, this is a state thing, but there, they have tiers, so depending on, and it's related to average income, I believe, poverty level, things like that, right? I see Sean nod his head the most, so I'm going to let you explain if, if you feel necessary.
I mean, go ahead, unless you want me to.
Well, there's a little bit of, for, for lack of a better term, there's a little bit of distribution, so when the wealth comes into the state and then it goes, some goes back out, there's a tier that favors the less wealthy on the redistribution part to aid those who may be at the, you know, low end. So farmers who work like crazy and, you know, rake in a cool $31,000 for a year for their whole household and their, you know, 50-acre farm or whatever. So people, I think that's part of the tier system that that's referring to, tier designations?
They've been working on this for a number of years now, but the problem gets to be when you have a, a community like Robbins in Moore County. Moore County is a fairly rich county. Robbins is a poor town. They can't qualify for some grants because they live in a, because they're in a...
That's a really good example, yeah.
Wealthy county. So they've been trying to figure out the tier system, because it really does put some of these poorer communities at a disadvantage, because they have to check the box where we're at, tier two or tier one, and...
So with, with that one said, I would be perfectly fine to just not address that one ourselves. I would rather let some of the more troubled municipalities kind of speak up.
Strike that one?
Not strike, but, well, I'm just saying, I just, I just let it ride, kind of thing. I think the, the other municipalities that this impacts more directly would probably prefer to speak to it. I haven't really found that the, any of, any of the tier discussions, well, I'm just going to abandon that, and let's move on. How's that? So film grants, historic preservation efforts, cities and towns continue to grow the economy. I think this is just, hey, state, just do your part to help us grow the economy in the state.
I don't see how some of that is economic growth in some respect. I mean, it's nice to preserve the historic...
The city of Wilmington would disagree.
Oh, the film, no, no, the films, yeah.
Well, in fact, they...
The film grants, but robust historic preservation, that's probably for the film grants, so that they take pictures on site.
Salisbury, Salisbury, Stateville, I keep getting them confused. One of those benefited a lot from the state's work on historic preservation.
Salisbury.
Salisbury.
Yeah.
Through some grants.
Why do we have economic growth twice?
Apex benefited from that.
Why do we have economic growth twice?
This came right out of the leak saying, I just, kind of at the last minute, copied and pasted, so get it off the color, so...
I'm good with leaving it economic growth like it is.
So can we move to fiscal?
No.
Oh.
I would like, from economic growth, I would like to see, and this is funding, increased funding for, for two-year technical schools. We desperately need technical people. If you look at, one of the complaints of businesses is, it's who they can hire, and then student loans based on the arena that they, for technical, for technical...
Right.
Careers.
So tech, school, vocation, those folks that go there tend to stay local when they go get work.
Yeah.
And so that's a good thing for the state. I think they could, I think that's a good one. I think people can try to find a way to get behind that.
I think we need to promote it. It's, it's, it's one of the things that businesses ask for.
What are you saying, promote those, or...
Well, I'm saying to fund, fund the technical schools, and I would, you know, I know we've got a student loan fiasco in the United States, but a lot of times that is because they've chosen vocations that when they get out, they get to go be a cashier someplace because they can't apply it. But if you do it to, for what businesses want, based on business needs, give student loans, based on what the businesses want.
So we can have a whole other conversation about coming out with student loans and the student loan crisis and the necessity of a four-year general studies degree.
But this is just tech schools.
You're talking about, you're talking about the state funding like Wake Tech Media College graders, so they have more ability to...
To, based on business needs, based on, you know, the student loan program is not based on business needs, it's based on...
What you want to study.
not based on business needs, it's based on, well, yeah, I think I want to be an artist. And I know there's a lot of artists that are needed, and it's a great profession, but realistically, when they get out, then they can't pay their darn-
Yeah.
...uh, fees, because artists don't get rich until after they die.
Right, and our, our, our state's tech school system is, is funded, and, uh, loans for tech schools tend to be 10% of loans for four-year schools.
Yeah.
There's just, it does, the costs are a lot lower, and the payback is higher. People pay their student loans back, and if they're vocational, it means that they're right back to work as soon as they get their, and it's a, right, it's a vocational degree, it's a technical degree for something that should be employable, so, at least, the tech school people that I've talked to, the administrative, and faculty, and curriculum people, I've never heard four-year people talk like these. They want, the, day one, when you get your, two-year associate degree, they want you to be employed. They work really hard to get people straight into jobs, and I think that's, I, I mean, I, I would, I'd be okay if we make a general statement of support for tech schools and funding, and-
And student, and personally, I do see loans-
And loads, you know, needs-based loads, or whatever.
Based on, based on business requests.
Yeah, yeah, business needs.
Business needs.
What do you mean, man, you asking the loan, what are you talking about the loans part, like availability for students to go get loans?
Yeah, or, or state funding for a loan program, where students can go get loans.
State loans.
Hmm?
The state, state government is not in the business of providing student loans.
Why can't, why aren't they?
Louisiana does.
If they're not, then maybe they should be, because we need to-
If that's what, if that's what you want to make, what the fuck?
I would do that as a request.
If you want to do it, okay.
Because I think when we sit in economic development committee situation, that does come up.
I'm not interested, I want to make sure that we're clear, I'm not interested in, in telling them to lobby for the state to pay for college for people, not ask for that.
No, I'm saying loans.
Or, you're also talking about funding to the school?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Because that is a general fund, it's not to an individual.
Okay.
But, but a loan is to an individual. I don't believe in giving people money to go get, get educated, because a lot of them end up playing cards in the commissary, or what they call it.
My thought on that is that, a lot of, I think, for people who know in high school that they're going to be going to a vocational school or a technical school, that last year of high school should be more technical, vocational-based, rather than taking the higher-level calculus and all these other things that they may not necessarily need for that, so having that last year of high school as kind of that, that, this is my personal opinion going into this, so that whenever they need to finish up their career, they have less time that they have to spend out of pocket going to college, or technical school, or vocational, or whatever, so.
And, and your opinion is exactly what my high school did many, many years ago.
That's what we need to go back to, then.
Truly, and if you look at Germany, and in some respects, it's not a good choice to pick, as an example, but they go there, same route, too. The problem is, they pegged the kids way early, and that's not good.
Yeah, it's too early, right.
Well, but you're absolutely correct.
For common ground, it sounds like, are we okay with general continued funding of technical schools, or increasing funding for technical schools, and basing it on the needs of the local businesses?
Yeah.
So, the, the nice thing about-
I would, I would do student loans based on the needs of, of businesses, to, to help get people into it. And if it's a loan, and they get out, you know, you can set it up so that, I think, well, here's the legal part, I don't know, almost garnish their way, you know, you get out, you start, you pay back a certain percentage every year, or something.
Okay, well, we don't have to solve that, but let me, let me, so on the student loan thing, get a clarification, do you want the school to make the loan and collect the loan repayments? Because I think your answer is going to make a difference on how Councilman Moore here gets on board or doesn't.
I don't know, I don't know the details of that, I guess, I wouldn't want to step into the details, because I don't know.
Yeah.
Whether they should do it, or they should go down to a-
If the, if the state can make the school more affordable, doesn't that help?
But then, then you've still got your bell to fudge, and there's going to be always some bright students on one end that will have to get a loan. I mean, I went through school, and I didn't take a loan, but I worked my way through school, and it took me longer to get through school as a result. I would have been better off if I got a loan, cut the hell out, and gotten into a higher-paying job.
Drew, how do you, how do you, how do you sense this conversation so far? You took a few notes.
I've jotted down increased funding for two-year technical schools based on need of businesses, and we're still debating on whether one of-
What if we just go with that?
The student loan piece.
If we just, if we let the loan piece just kind of not be said one way or the other, but-
Okay.
I mean, I put, I put student loans-
Because I think that's the key, I think that's the key part of the whole thing, is asking the state to help fund the local schools based on the local businesses.
And I guess if they fund them, they can make the to-doish tuition less than they need to.
And, and you know what, yeah, they'll figure out in Raleigh whether or not they want to do grants, or loans, or just give the ch-
I'm, I'm fine with that, we can make it that simple.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Cool?
Thank God you're here, Drew, you've saved us twice now.
Write that down, Ben.
For your review.
Put that on your performance. Um, all right, uh, you had the floor before we moved to fiscal, so are you-
I'm, I'm through, I think.
Okay. So, from a fiscal standpoint, um, my instinct tells me that we'll probably just roll through this, because we have stellar finances, the league has been really good, um, but just take a look and see if there's something that triggers your thought, or makes you want to add something that we, we don't see.
What is this, bullet point number four?
Yeah, I was just looking at that one.
Current such, distribution of local sales taxes, one-year delay in implementation would account for.
So, the way it is right now, if the county switches from the, just, distributing our sales tax to us, from the ad valorem to the per capita, they can do that, just like that.
The count.
Yep. This, if enacted, would say, you can make the decision now, at the end of fiscal 18, and it would not take effect until the beginning of fiscal 20.
And that makes sense, though, kind of.
Does that help, allows this, yeah, allows, allows Sean to develop a budget.
Try to do that.
Hire people smarter than you are.
Get out of their way.
Let them go.
Okay, yeah, it makes sense.
Did I say that right?
Okay. On final, on fiscal?
Looks good to me.
Okay. Um, so, the rest of economic growth, in case you want to worry those, no, that's all right, I mean, I'm sure that's how it came off on their thing.
So, bullet point number one, is this that hotel tax?
Room occupancy tax, yeah.
We talked about, that if we collected it in Apex, it doesn't go to Apex? Is that correct? Is that?
The county collects it, and then applies it to projects that promote tourism, right?
Do you know anything about that one?
Travel and tourism?
I think it's mostly just because of the money, you can't use it on roads.
Pretty much.
The argument is that, if you got the tourism, you got people coming in, they're using your utilities and your, your infrastructure, but as of right now, the way the legislation is written, you cannot use hotels, room, obviously, I can just use tax for infrastructure, and so it's really, one of the press, most pressing needs for cities across the state, no matter where you are, is infrastructure, whether that's water, sewer, whether that's roads, pick which area you want, I mean, so any, any revenue avenue that can be used is what everyone's generally seeking. So, when there's something restricted like this, um, that, that's what, so that's what it's kind of, it's looking for, is just to free up the restriction, the regulation that can be used for those things, because like, right now-
Their revenue is, yeah, it goes to the convention center, PNC Arena, yeah.
Entertainment, yeah, it's the-
We, we have to submit, and so we gotta grant them-
We get the leftovers, so that half million dollars was-
That's right. We have leftovers, and it has to be-
Thank you, though, for getting it.
It all has to be used for some project that, you know, the saying for them is heads and beds, typically, you know, what's going to bring people here, so it ends up being more tourism, attraction-based type things. Um, and, yeah, that's what's bringing people here, but then there's also what supports, you know, people here, so they're bringing, you're building those things, that's great, you're still asking everybody that still lives here to pay for all the roads and everything else.
On, on the first one, really quickly, then, municipal infrastructure, but what is service? What, they have, it's service and infrastructure. That jumps out as like, we're gonna hire more-
Service is pretty vague, so.
Like salaries for firefighters and police.
I think we should strike that.
It's gonna be like, hey, the police officer had to respond to the apartment or the hotel or something, you know, it's, it's, I mean, that's where the argument comes in, but it comes to-
I think that would jump out at them, is they're funding our police department, is the trouble. Do we all agree, I think we all agree to strike that?
There is, there's another tool that, did that pass, hasn't it been?
I don't know if it passed or not.
So, there was, um, there had been in the past, some cities that have asked for authority to levy a quarter cent sales tax, and-
Quarter cent?
Yeah, so, that had not gotten a lot of traction in the legislature, it had been, this time around, been modified, so, it was still a quarter cent sales tax, and it was local legislation for Mount Airy, Hendersonville, and Mooresville. Um, they, they changed the approach of it, so it was specified where the money would go, so it would have to go to infrastructure, and it also specified that it was subject to referendum. So, it would be a tool that an elected body could say, "Hey, voters, do you want to impose a quarter cent sales tax for X?", so, for transportation, you know, especially in, you know, in the environment we're in now, where we don't have the transportation impact fees and such, you know, do you want to impose that? So, that has not, there's not been a move to make that a statewide ask yet, but that might be something worth tossing around, I mean, I'll just throw that out.
I mean, we could ask, I personally, I, I wouldn't want to impose a quarter cent sales tax at the town level, because we are putting ourselves at a quarter cent sales tax disadvantage with respect to the other guys around us. That's the realistic part of it, I think. I mean, it's not much.
If I were, if I were a betting person, I don't think we're at a disadvantage.
No.
Because everybody's in the same boat with the, the lack of funding for infrastructure.
So, everybody will do it, so it's just another sales tax. From Apex's aspect, though, we do have Costco, which drags people from other places, then you're gonna want the IKEAs and whatever you can get.
I would be willing, not, not that it's relevant, but I would be willing to bet, two-thirds to three-quarters of the Costco shoppers come from elsewhere, because I've stood there for an hour, not seen, and seen thousands of people go by, and not recognized a one of them. Is, and I'm like, yeah, and I'm like-
You don't recognize them.
Yeah, and I'm, yeah, they're from, but anyway.
I know, don't go, don't go beyond what you just said.
I'm just gonna stop.
All right now.
I've learned.
So, what's next?
So, I, I don't know, but-
Do we want, even want to do that, or do we want to do it?
A quarter cent sales tax?
That's up in the fiscal health one, actually, I mean, the second bullet point on fiscal health.
It, it's an option that a town could have, and I think all of town should have the option, but would I want to use that option, I'd say no.
But you could specify.
That's my first one anyway.
So, yeah, so there's budget flexibility regarding sales taxes.
Yeah.
I think that's as good as generalized statements, if you can.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know what that meant, but, okay. To keep it as big, as open as possible, so, because there's several things that can be, that can be brought forward or come up.
I think, I mean, it fits in the general narrative, right? Municipalities, give us some flexibility.
Right.
You know, to make some decisions, so that we can make, you know, good local decisions. Um, because one, there may be, are some issues that should be across the board, every municipality decided at the state level, but a lot of issues can be decided locally better, so, okay, uh, what else? So, that's, well, I'm sort of transitioning verbally to the municipal authority part at the bottom. So, the first one is related to personnel issues, I'm not sure if that's directed at a specific type of problem, I don't really know.
I don't know.
I can't think of what that-
When was the last year?
Is that town manager, town attorney sort of thing?
I don't recall what that was from, from there.
Okay, can we just, can we ignore it, and move past it?
Take it off?
I don't, I-
Is that regarding, wasn't there a, was there a council member, I think it was Fayetteville, that like, everybody was finding him, he wanted-
It's too recent, though.
That he did, yeah, that, who was that?
It was fairly recent.
There was a council member in Fayetteville that did something, I think.
Except bribes, or something like that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And they wanted them, and he said, "I'm not gonna resign."
Well, that was a council member.
Yeah, so, is that what that's referring to, over personnel issues?
I think that was a, it happened in the last six months.
That would be more of an elected official kind of problem, because they, it's hard to kick your council member out when they've been duly voted by the citizens, but you can marginalize them.
Yeah.
But, not that I'm recommending that, but here, I think municipal authority over municipal personnel issues, the only thing I can guess is, there may have been some state legislation that was being imposed and restricting, but I can't think of what it is.
Yeah.
All right, well, I just, I just say, just-
Leave it, that's it.
I'd leave it, because I'd rather defer, I'd rather, I'd rather err on the side of flexibility. Um, municipal election is to be determined by a local municipal authority, so, that's, I guess, the state going into a municipality and telling them how they can or can't do the election.
They did that.
Yeah, they did do that.
Yeah.
What was that related to, Greensboro?
They had to go to a district system, right? And they changed the terms of all of them.
Yeah, they changed terms, the other one that's popping its head up is, they may, they're, they've tried, they've, there's talk about shifting municipal elections to even years instead of odd years, so that falls with all the other elections. Um, so, the, the pros on that are, well, it should reduce election costs, it's all there at one time, you get better turnout for, for local government, um, the, the argument against is, well, no one's paying attention to the local government.
I'll argue against, I'll argue against it every day.
And so, that's, you know, it gets lost in, you know, it gets lost in everything, at least in odd years, it keeps it, so.
Well, and the other part of that is, um, you run the risk of people getting votes without knowledge of issues, because the people who came to the poll, came to poll for somebody higher up the ballot, and they really don't know who's running, but in an odd-numbered year, the people that show up to vote are the ones probably who've got a mind to vote for a council member.
There's different things in there.
Yeah.
Oh, the other thing with Greensboro was, they, they changed the number of board members, they were-
In Greensboro, yeah.
They were changing, they wanted to change the size of the council.
Wow.
Yeah, so, I mean, it was-
What did Greensboro do wrong?
It was a legislator that was a former council person, that, you know, they got defeated, and so they went, they got, it, it, no, it was, it was really squirrely, yeah.
Yikes.
Okay, is that, and that's what we, what are we asking there?
Well, what we're saying here is, give the municipalities the decision, yeah, let them determine how they want their elections to, to be, and how many council members, and whether they have districts or not, and if so, how many, right?
Sounds good.
We should have districts.
We can have that discussion later.
I know.
I have brought it up, as you may remember.
Well, yeah, and, and now, now we're discussing it. Yeah, and, and now, now we're discussing it.
Yeah.
We can discuss them later.
So who's gonna step up in our district? I guess Billy or.
I will.
Alright, how about?
It's getting close on.
Local management of, of ownership of local assets. Local management or ownership of local assets. I, I, my guess is that they have this as in here as a direct result of something that.
It was Ashville.
Ashville and Charlotte, Charlotte was the airport.
Yeah, Charlotte was the airport.
Ashville was their water.
Was this state wanted to own it?
They wanted to just take it and give it to an authority.
Yeah.
They didn't lighten up the municipalities, and in that case, they felt that municipalities.
So they could, basically, the precedent would be they could come in and take our water system and give it to Cary.
Yeah, they felt Cary could run it better, supposedly.
Usually there's some business in.
They could take Cary's and give it to us. Okay.
Yeah, let's leave that in there.
You know, this, one, one more on this and I don't know. I'm sure this won't go anywhere, but I gotta say it. Cause I, I think Electric City towns should be able to generate their own electricity through renewable energy. Or we need to somehow rein in Duke energy because they are a pain in the neck.
I happen to agree with that, that we need to be able to generate our own electricity through whatever means would be appropriate.
Super contractually screwed over for the next 20 years.
We could, we could.
Nope.
No? If legislation came in, that would.
There's offer ramps, we can buy our way out of it.
I know, that's the other part of it too.
We just have to go out on the market and buy our electricity on our own.
And that's a problem too, because then you're, you're really nowhere near the size of David against Goliath. You don't even have a slingshot.
Cities do too, right? They have special authority to do that.
But if we had the authority to generate our own in parallel. We're, we're limited as to how much we can generate. We can generate some stuff, we can generate sort of to cover ourselves in the wastewater facility. But looking at it from a realistic standpoint, we can, we are not allowed to generate enough to even keep up with it in daytime by our contracts.
What do you propose we do? I mean, put solar panels everywhere or windmills up?
It would be, it would be cheaper for us realistically for a large solar farm to put it down there and generate our own electricity and feed it right into the plant. It would be, because you can, on these big solar farms, if you have the area, and we have some of the area down there, I don't know whether Cary would let us do it, but you could put those, you, you can put the facility in and all the costs and everything is less, and you can generate your own electricity and say, we're not, we don't need Duke. But we're not allowed to do that. We can't do that because.
Through our contract with electricity.
So, so maybe the way to word that is flexibility to generate, I mean, for the municipality to generate and distribute its own energy. Or in conjunction or separate from any other electric utility. Something along those lines, right? So what, what it may, may mean is if we wanted to, we wouldn't be restricted from doing it.
We're kinda more restricted through Electric City's contracts than people, than a, than a, like a Cary that's directly on to Duke Energy, I think. I think we are. I mean, Cary could go out and generate their own electricity on a net meter thing, possibly, I'm not sure.
I don't believe that to be the case.
Okay. Well, then that's why I said I'm not sure, because I think it does.
I had an idea for you, by the way.
I'm not sure it doesn't.
Solves two problems at once. Floating solar panels that you can cover Jordan Lake with prevents the evaporation that uses up all of Fayetteville's water.
They started that with the solar.
And we can generate electricity from it.
So flexibility to generate our own electricity via renewable, otherwise.
Yeah, because we don't wanna set up power plants.
Yeah, setting up a coal-fired power plant downtown Apex.
Yeah, here's a catch 22 with solar panels, right? And we hadn't really had much of a discussion about this, but on all these houses. One of the big things we haven't talked about is trees, and mature growth trees. Well, what does that create? Shade that doesn't allow sunlight to get to solar panels?
That's right, and you, and.
So you mass grade every site and take all the trees out so that everybody can have solar panels?
No, but unfortunately, they're mass grading right now, aren't they? I mean, they're, they're doing it anyhow. The smaller the lots go, I'm not saying take one tree out. I, I'd love to do solar on my own house, but I got a bunch of trees and I'm not gonna take them out. We're not requiring anybody to take them out.
Well, you're right, but therein lies the problem of, once you have large trees, solar doesn't.
But that's not gonna occur on a wastewater facility or a freshwater facility where you've got large amounts of land that are ex-farms and stuff. You can put them, you can put them up. I think that's the detail, I think we should have them right though, that's the detail. And, and you've got a good point on some parts of it, certainly, and I agree with you. You don't wanna take them recently.
I mean, you're, I mean, there are some conflicting priorities.
But that's detail.
But, but if we are prevented in some way as a municipality from generating enough electricity to have it feed back into the grid when we can generate it faster than we're using it, then we want relief from that restriction.
Yes.
Yes, I agree.
We have that to a certain extent already. You've read it, you know, you know the numbers.
I know the numbers, but we are limited.
The finance committee's gonna deal with some solar stuff.
You'll go cross-eyed.
We're gonna deal with it.
That's gonna be.
Alright, I guess we gave it a break.
Yeah, bring your glasses and straighten your eyes out, because you'll go cross-eyed trying to figure it out.
We can have something in there about flexibility to generate power.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah.
You know, and obviously legislation could trump the contract.
Sure. Yes.
And contract, they're gonna have to get renegotiated if there's enough push.
And, and so the litmus test for this is should any municipality want, or should any municipality want to have this and have the state help make sure that they're enabled to do that, should they want to?
Okay.
Well, that sounds, that sounds fine to me, but wasn't the Electric Cities in the nuclear power business up until about two years ago? Didn't we?
Yeah.
Didn't we take a vote to get out of that?
We're out of it. We sold our assets to Duke.
Yeah, we're still in the business, we, we sold our assets.
We're in the, we're in the distribution business only now.
So we were in the power generation business?
Yes, we were, with Duke, through Electric Cities, not Apex itself.
I'm with you, I don't like Duke as much as the next guy, cause I'm a target of it.
You're what?
Different Duke.
It's a UNC, it's a UNC.
My last sentence, I'm sorry. Yeah. But.
But when were we in the power business a few years ago?
We were in the power business, but it was, it was in, under contract with Duke, Duke ran everything, and it was through Electric Cities. And the way we got into the power industry, and I, I don't know whether you recall, but they were brownouts happening in North Carolina, and they said, you know, if you towns don't join us with this nuclear facility, you're gonna have brownouts. So some of the towns got together and, and Electric Cities paid for the utilities to put their nuclear facility up because they didn't have the money to do it. And it was supposed to be four units, it's Sharon Harris, and there's only one, so the cost went sky high, and we had a big problem. And we finally got out of it. That's, that's kind of the history, I guess, I'm sure you guys know it too. It was, it was a.
I'm fine with having the authority to make decisions at a lower level.
Okay, and I apologize, I'll throw my soapbox out.
Alright, well, you agree with me.
I would've been disappointed if there wasn't something here about renewable energy.
Putting that in, I wasn't sure, huh?
Yeah.
I would've been surprised.
Okay.
Alright. Well, there's some more public infrastructure stuff on the back there.
Something's repeated.
STIP.
It's the transportation.
Yeah, the STIP, it looks like. Oh, it's for the, transportation.
It's the way that the state prioritizes transportation.
Okay.
We scored.
So, it has the. What percentage of the roads does a town of Apex own in our jurisdiction?
Couldn't tell.
Five percent?
Yeah.
More or less?
Yes. What was your question?
That's helpful, thank you.
People here that know those answers, please.
It's not five percent, but it's more or less, I'm pretty sure of that.
On the whole concept of municipal control over something, I mean, I think that the infrastructure in our town, if we were in control of it more, we could make better decisions for our citizens on a quicker response time and take some things and take care of things, and if the state is in control of it.
That, that is true for us, but may not be true for some of the poorer areas and our poorer municipalities.
And I would argue that it's not true for us.
Not true for us?
Where do you get the money? So, alright, we wanna, let's say, you say, go pave all of Chapel Road. Okay, we'll go do that. Where do you get the money from? Right now, it comes from the state, cause that's a state road.
Doc tends to be kinda happy to handle the roads when they get a chance to municipalities.
Well, because the money doesn't go with it, right?
It goes with it for the first year.
No, we get, so, so as we increase our lane miles, we'll get additional power bill money. But that additional power bill money is not gonna be enough to, you know, the delta and the money we get is not gonna be enough to repave that road.
But the reason to take over the road is because the state either hasn't done a good enough job for your needs or you have improvement ideas above and beyond what you can convince them to implement, and so you just wanna fund it and do it yourself.
And we recently added a couple, four people, I think, to Public Works just to take care of some of these state intersections that.
Oh, you're talking about the grass hands.
Yeah, so we've had to do it.
But we, we also, the most recent road we took was Salem Street. From.
Center.
Just downtown here.
From the Peakway to.
Okay.
Somme?
No, fifty-five.
Fifty-five, oh, we took all that, I didn't know we took all of that.
This is why, yeah, that, the signal at Hunter and Salem is the only signal that we have.
Peakway and Salem, we don't?
No, the DOT will maintain the signal if it touches a DOT road. That one does not, every other one does.
Hunter and Salem are now ours.
So I know, I've talked to people.
How well do we coordinate this? This is an aside, the stoplight sequences, I think, we have a coordination program, I think.
DOT.
Is this still through DOT?
It's through DOT, and then the ones on sixty-four are coordinated as part of Cary's.
That's an aside, thank you.
So, so on that point, that's a great point, roads, valid point, I can see that. Traffic signals, highway sixty-four, let's say, as the volume has increased, those, those signals haven't adjusted accordingly, it's an argument, right? So would it be better, would something that we would support be municipal control over some of those stoplights?
We're gonna have it.
We have input to that.
Two of them, right? Two of them are by Cary.
Right.
In Apex, where Cary controls them.
Right, cause they're coordinated with all the other ones down sixty-four that Cary's managing.
DOT controlled.
No, Cary managing those.
And really, I think they're doing a decent job, it's just.
Alright, so the Peakway and Salem, we don't control that, DOT controls it?
Correct, now, we, we have input into the coordination of all that.
Yeah, we have to talk about the Lord Dunkin'.
Yeah, Lord Dunkin'.
And that, that's a, that's a Cary signal, and it's, anyway, we're getting way off.
So my legislative, my legislative point was.
We already have the authority, so we don't need, let's, let's, what?
Yeah, if we're got it.
I mean, if we already have the authority and things can happen, well, we need them to happen, if, if it makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, if we wanna get in the, if the council says, let's get in the traffic signal business.
Well, why not, we're getting in the power business, we're getting in all the other businesses.
Yeah, we can do that.
We can do traffic signal C, right?
All it takes is money.
I guess we can, I, I just look at the power business to get into it. It, it's economically.
We can do anything you want, as long as it's not illegal and moral and unethical. All it takes is money.
That takes.
That's Drew Haven's, Drew Haven's rule number seven.
Show me the money. We'll make it happen.
But I, I mean, it's not unreasonable to think one day we might manage all of our own lights, but not tomorrow.
We will have to.
But not tomorrow. No, we won't have any lights, we'll have all traffic circles.
We look hard downtown.
Actually, everybody's riding bikes.
That's right, we'll all have electric bikes in traffic circles.
Robotic cars.
Yeah.
Eventually, it looks like.
Autonomous cars.
Miss Dozier's input.
And we'll all be riding bikes while the cars are just riding around without us.
That's Miss Dozier's stuff?
Yeah, I don't know.
Was there more, was there more?
We have a hundred.
What, what are you showing?
The federal, what is Dozier's input?
Oh. Okay.
What is EFAIR, that's from the federal.
That's the taxation, right?
Yeah, that's the, that's already been taken care of, the sales tax, that's actually been scraped out of there.
On federal?
Yep.
The state Supreme Court, they're about, state, federal Supreme Court.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
The EFAIR, the last.
Oh, okay, so the passage of EFAIR's legislative.
Yep, it was Supreme Court.
Five before decision?
So I think Ms. Dozier's email was directed toward the 2016 legislative agenda.
Right, which is not really what we're trying to accomplish tonight, but I appreciate the effort, which.
One of the things I'll ask, if I may.
Yes.
Is number five. On her. It was not on the League's list from the.
Jordan Lake rules?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point.
It's on the 2016 one, but not on the 2017. I, I would love to put that.
So this is ours, that's, then this was the League's.
These are two different things.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Implement the Jordan Lake rules finally.
Right, it's, it's, it's. So, so to be clear, to be clear, this is part of Apex.
Yes, I got that now.
Legislative agenda, which we may or may not wanna supply to our representatives in the legislature directly, but.
This is for the League.
Right, well, I don't wanna go putting Jordan Lake rules on this, cause it's really very localized. It doesn't, it's hard to translate it to say.
But hasn't the, the state legislature restricted us from that?
Well, they just took it and said they're not gonna have Jordan Lake rules.
Right, so that.
It is a state.
Yeah, I don't know if the League will take that up or not. There's a gentleman here who would like to make a comment.
I'm sorry, I can't help, it's just too much of a coincidence. My name's Jim Hawkeye, I'm, I'm a longtime resident. My day job happens to be one of the architects of the Jordan Lake rules, I work for the Division One Resources, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, very nice.
We want them, don't we?
God, yeah.
We do.
Yes.
So I don't know, I don't know, is the League, if we put it on, it might, it wouldn't hurt, I don't, my opinion, if you're asking for it, you're not. Wouldn't hurt to have, wouldn't hurt to have it on there. I don't believe that it will make it through the League's advocacy goals process. But if, if we can get it into, on our list and maybe they can at least.
We could, I think what we might wanna do is if we can take one step towards the League of Municipalities' mission, and rather than say, Jordan Lake rules, what if we say something at the higher level that says protecting water supplies for nearby reservoirs of local municipalities, whatever, such as Jordan Lake for Apex? Or something similar, I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's a step towards where they wanna go with it. As opposed to saying we're only thinking about ourselves.
We're not only thinking.
Well, you know what I mean.
Frankly, but, yeah, I know what you mean, but, you know, it's not just, it's Cary, it's, it's all the way down to Fayetteville and.
I know, but we're not, but to be clear, this list doesn't advocate for Cary, this advocates for Apex as a worse plot.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And so, I, I, I think if we word it in a way that just says, we, we want freshwater supplies, reservoirs, whatever you wanna call it, we can apply the concept of Jordan Lake rules.
And then parenthetically, i.e. Jordan Lake rules.
That's right.
Alright.
So that they understand where we're coming from.
Yeah.
Right.
Can, can I get elaboration on Jordan Lake rules?
How much elaboration do you want?
You're gonna give a synopsis, maybe?
We want all the municipalities upstream to better manage all their stormwater flow and their sewer systems. So whatever water goes in there that comes down here isn't full of nitrates and phosphates and screwing up our water supply.
It, it's managing, managing the uphill water runoff. Managing the runoff into the lake so that the lake water is clean enough so that when it gets imported and processed, it can be made clean. But if you start with a polluted lake, it becomes a lot harder.
Yeah, I got you.
A lot more costly.
That's in a nutshell, and the reinstatement was there was some experiments that were trying to be used in lieu of, and they weren't very good.
Anybody with half a brain knew that those weren't gonna work. Each, each of those things was, the, the power of the thing, average power was like thirty-two watts.
Yeah.
Thirty-two watts.
Like a blender?
Like a blender, yeah. And the other advantage of the Jordan Lake rules is. And the other advantage of the Jordan Lake rules is it protects the Ha River because the Ha River is a river in distress because of the way they dump the water in during storms. I mean, you've got to retain it up there to better preserve that.
All right, can we, I think we got that covered, are we okay? You feel like you know what to write parenthetically?
Well, and if the League is asking for regional goals, I imagine this is one we could get them as.
Yeah, it is regional.
Right, yeah.
Okay, what else?
Is there anything else we wanted to point out from Councilwoman Dozier's? Do you need any budgeting rules, Sean?
There are in there, you just need tools.
Tools, yeah.
And then leave us alone, let us run our business.
Right.
Let the local elected officials.
And I think, I think what I would, I think what I would like to do with this town of Apex legislative agenda, though, is when we're not, because right now we're working on a deadline for the League. But I think when we're not on a deadline, but before we get anywhere close to long session, i.e. November, maybe, where we can take a look at the legislative agenda for the town and then we can do the 2019 version of that and have it already printed in color, ready to go when January rolls around so that we have time to begin socializing it with representatives.
Wherever they are.
Right, in, in the General Assembly. Preferably the ones who either represent us in Apex or those who may find a passion in one of the topics. Because you may find this, you know, a representative from Catawba County who has a passion about one of these things. So they may want to know to put Apex on their list. All right, does that sound good?
I think we've got the general direction. What we'll do is we'll try to clean it up, distill it down, get it back out to those six with a pretty short turnaround. I know you can't do reply all because we can't have a meeting via email, otherwise the attorney will get.
But you can reply one separately.
Yes, because that's not a meeting.
Right. So.
Please don't test the boundaries of this.
But, yeah, so we'll get some sort of a, say, thumbs up, thumbs down, we'll get.
But you know, and, just so, to be clear, but you know, in practice, you can BCC the all council.
Yeah, I know how to do it, yeah.
And then let us know that you've sent it to all council. And that way, nobody replies all. Even if they try, they won't.
You're rougher than I could ever think of you.
Look, I've been in the corporate world long enough to know what happens. It's not good when somebody replies all.
Oh, yeah. I know a guy that accidentally hit reply all when I was at Lord and was making fun of one of the vice presidents.
Old Lord is right.
Yeah.
And he tried to recall it, because you could recall it.
That's almost as bad, I know, that's almost as bad as the HR guy tried to send a salary list to Al and it went to all users because it auto-completed at Cisco.
Well, I was, I was in a very bright corporation.
Yeah, are we at the end of the list?
Yeah, we're done.
Are you, you okay?
Yeah.
You okay? All right, we're adjourned and now we, 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 right.